Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sansa, Jim Jones with Veterans and Politics. Today, our guest is going to be Alicia Nilson, candidate for Henderson City Council Ward Number One. And special election. And just want folks to know that this coming Saturday, we're going to be conducting the only election in the state of Nevada, right? Is that safe to say? The only election in the state of Nevada for 2023. It's not like the appointment process that happened earlier this afternoon. So election process. But I'm glad the city council decided to go to election instead of an appointment because the will of the people is very important. And it's going to be at Juan's.
Flaming.
Flaming Fajitas. And people go, hey, on the fly, you got, what happened to Juan? And I'm like, well, you know, I believe Mike and Juan both own the restaurant, right?
Mark.
Mark, Mark and Juan. So I just felt that maybe I shouldn't put one name over another, but it is what it is. I guess they could handle that internally. Whose name should be on the restaurant, right? So it's going to be on Saturday, the 11th of February. We're going to start at 11:00 AM sharp. It's going to be live on Facebook, on this channel, by the way. 11:00 AM sharp, and we're going to end it at 1 o'clock. So two hours. So if you have a favorite candidate, come on down and support, or watch it on Facebook, or what have you. And it should be a well, robust, informative interview process. You got your questions down?
Yes. And it'll be exciting too, because one of the things I brought up when we went and saw Kerry Cox get sworn in is that the city Henderson finally came to its senses. And only people in
The ward.
Ward one, in the city of Henderson can vote for the city council representative, M Ward one, which makes sense.
Like the mayor. They're not running for mayor. They're running for council.
Right.
Took them a while to catch up. You believe North Las Vegas beat them. How about that? But anyways, it is what it is. And that's good for the candidates. That way, they don't have to spend so much time roaming the whole city and spending all that money it costs to run for an election. So, and I just want to let everybody know this program was brought to you by Ron Quint. Jim, you having rants?
No, actually, I don't have any rants today.
Jim doesn't have any rants.
No, they're in a good mood.
All right.
Well, we have Alicia Nilson. Please tell us about yourself. Thank you for coming on the program.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to come and answer some of your guys' questions.
And we have a few of them too.
Okay, good, good. I will let you know, we had the Henderson Chamber recently did their interviews, and they only gave us 30 minutes. And I don't know if I am just long-winded or extremely passionate and well-informed. Well, per person, they had about seven, well, they had seven people interviewing with different questions. And there was not a lot of time to answer questions. So I'm grateful that you guys are here and that I'm not so limited on time. But a little bit about myself. So I was born and raised in Henderson, in Ward One specifically. I was born at the
Twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah.
Is that right?
No. No, no. Were you asking my age?
No, you're 23 or 24, right?
No.
You're not?
No.
Oh my God, I think I looked at the wrong thing. I could have swore she was 23 or 24.
I'm 36.
Well, I'm just impressed.
I don't put my age on a lot of things.
Female ever announce her age.
She announced her age right away, didn't she?
I know. I was like, all right.
It's not hard to find if you want to look.
So that means you're honest. Are you sure you want to run for politics?
So I have been asked that question so many times, and I am not going to lie. Prior to this special election being announced, I actually went and talked to the handful of candidates who were considering, because, like I said, I'm 36. I've got children at home that take up time. I've got three, three beautiful babies. I've got a 10-year-old son, an eight-year-old daughter. And then I've got a five-year-old daughter, who I've got a very fun birth story, if you ever want to hear that.
That's probably another show.
But I've got three beautiful children, and I just, you know, if there was somebody who I genuinely felt was a better candidate, who could do more for the community and better represent them, then I would have happily stepped out and let somebody do this while I'm in this very important time of life.
What I'm hearing, Ms. Nilson, you looked at the slew of candidates and you're like, nah, nah.
No, no, no. Give me more credit than that. Give me more credit than that. I called them and I sat down and I spoke with them so that I could make an informed decision. Of course, you know, I Google. A lot of these people have, you know, popular backgrounds, easy to look up backgrounds. So look up their backgrounds. Say, oh, yeah, they seem like a cool person.
And until you talk to them.
Can we go and sit down at Starbucks and just, can I just talk with you and get a fill for you? And in those conversations with the candidates that I did speak with, I felt like I was, I felt like I was a better candidate. Not saying that they're not great people. I just felt like to represent Ward One.
Which has Water Street, the courthouse, City Hall.
All that stuff, yes.
When you go away to the border of Boulder, right?
So we go, yeah, essentially out to the boulder of
What's your demographics?
So in, oh, it's, the Ward One is a very just demographics based on age, based on income, all of that. It's extremely diverse. And I will say, one of the things that the city of Henderson did well, when they were trying to drop the wards, where they tried to make sure that you had equal portions of the senior population, of the young population, of college, of the low income, of the high income. So they tried to divvy that out as best they could to make sure that as a candidate, I wasn't just going to represent, you know, Anthem, where they've got a bunch of money, or in my ward, it's the Mission Hills area.
You got Boulder Highway?
I do. I've got Boulder Highway. I've got the trailer parks, and I've got friends who live in them. And it's, same thing. We've got, we've got an old part of Henderson, right? So we've got a lot of the lower demographics. The original Henderson.
Right there. So you have three kids and husband?
I do. I do. I've got three kids. My husband is Josh Nilson. We got married in 2008, and
Were you invited, Jim?
Why? Why didn't you guys meet me before then? I feel like you missed out on a great, I feel like you missed out on a good opportunity. But my husband and I, we got married in 2008. And then, like I said, so he worked for the Henderson Police Department. He retired roughly a year and a half ago.
How long did he put in?
He put in 14 years and seven months. So he left when
Were you with him that whole time?
Almost. So he got hired and brought in in 2007, and then we got married in 2008. So, yeah, we had a short relationship and engagement prior to the wedding, but
What does he do now?
So now he owns a gun store. It's Dark Horse Tactical. Right? Go figure. He owns a gun store, Dark Horse Tactical. I was telling you guys earlier. He's a Henderson police officer. He was on Henderson SWAT team for a handful of years. And he was the Sierra One. So he was the sniper lead at the end of his, his time up there.
Sniper.
Sniper lead.
How many weapons does he have? That's probably
None, none.
Really? Oh.
This is being livestreamed, okay?
Being a little facetious there.
No weapons.
Bubble gum machines. Maybe dart guns.
There you go. Dart guns, salt guns, hairs off. But he was a Henderson sniper for them for a while.
I like to have fun on these shows, so don't mind me.
Good. No, I love it. I love it.
Because when I'm serious, that's what you gotta worry about. And I'm all serious, and I have notes, and I start going through them, and I start looking at you. You know who I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think we have a good idea.
But yeah, so we got, we got married, and then we had children. So my, my personal background, I went to UNLV and I studied health science. I've got a bachelor's in science and kinesiology.
So what is that?
Kinesiology is interesting. Go ahead and explain it. I know what it is, but explain. My best friend, actually, he's a, he's a fitness trainer, and that's where he got his degree in was kinesiology.
So kinesiology is the study of the body and how it works. And it's, it's a more holistic approach. You see a lot of people, there's kinesiologists who work in the field, but it's a lot of exercise. It's a lot of diet. It's a lot of just
I heard that today when I saw my doctor.
Yeah? Well, so I could get on a totally different little podium and talk about that. Not a nutritionist. It's more of a full health perspective. So when you come in, they'll talk to you about, you know, strengthening for posture, strengthening for your core abdominals, so that you can sit well and do your activities well. It's proper gait training, which is walking, and just general strengthening and conditioning in a very scientific approach to make sure that we are healing and doing the best we can. You do mix some nutrition in with that. Obviously, out here in the desert, a lot of hydration is a huge thing, especially if you're talking blood sugars and that type of thing. So, yes, it's my, that's where my background is. So, yeah.
So, Ms. Nilson.
Yeah.
Why, Jim, you asked that question. Why you want to be a city councilwoman? Did you, did you mention that?
Not yet. I mean, I was, you know, that's always going to be my standard thing. Because I, well, first off, I'll just do
Jim will like, why you want to be a city council? And tell me the lines.
Well, my, my main thing is, okay. So Henderson Ward One is sometimes, and I don't like the term, but it's used a lot. They call it Hender-tucky.
Okay, part of it.
Right. Because it's, it's the, it is literally the old part of Henderson. One of the things that I appreciate about anybody who runs for city council is because it's, it's, it's very local, and it's, well, and
Where the rubber meets the road.
Where the rubber meets the road.
There you go.
So one of the things that I wanted to ask you is, so where City Hall sits, just directly to the west of City Hall, basically, well, I guess you could say behind it, but to the west, that's really where the older part of Henderson is.
That's all of our lead street.
Yeah, lead streets, yeah. Copper Street. My brother lived on Copper Street for a while.
Tungston, yeah.
Yeah. Well, those, those streets back there, they, excuse my language, they suck. I mean, they're bad. And then when you go, then, but then Water Street, Henderson's done a really good job of revitalizing Water Street. But then when you go east and you get around the Boulder Highway area, right in between there, it, well, the roads stink again.
You know why Water Street is so nice? It's where they do all the parades.
All the parades, yeah. So I mean, what, what's your plan to, to try to address that? Whether you need to take partnership with the county? Or to address those areas that seem to be forgotten? And I'm just so concerned about Water Street.
Well, and I'm glad you said that, because the city has spent a ton of money and time and energy in revitalizing Water Street. That's our current mayor, Michelle Romero. That was the end of her career, was the development of and the revitalization of Water Street. So they spent a lot of money there with the hope and intention that we would be able to bring in taxes to use towards infrastructure, such as the roads. And honestly, infrastructure, I feel like people are a huge and probably the most vital part of the infrastructure, because as a city, if you don't have the people to do the services, such as police, fire, paramedics, such as the roads, such as public works, all of that, then you, you aren't going to be able to do anything, because you're either going to have to subcontract it out and spend a ton of money, or it's just not going to get done. But so specifically, are you talking just roads, or do you want the whole picture in general?
Well, essentially, I, here's where I stand on it. Like, if you don't have proper roads, then, then you're not going to be able, then you won't have a proper infrastructure
Yes.
in place. So one of the things that I wanted to know is like, what, what's your plan for the roads in Ward One? Let's, let's just, let's just take roads.
So just roads. And this is actually really interesting, because I've talked to our public work sector, and this is something that was just brought up at our last city council meeting this past Tuesday. And the city, they subdivide the city into seven sections, and they will rotate through those seven sections. So about once every seven years is your shot as a city to make sure that your little nichey area is taken care of. And the reason that I, that was explained to me as to why they do that with the roads is because if you've got someone driving from, let's say, Inspirada, all the way out to my side to Ward One to do some work, and then driving all the way out to Boulder Highway in Sunset and back, you've got one person who's spending X amount of hours driving where they're not able to do work. Whereas if you've got them fixing, you know, Anthem, and then they'll move over to Inspirada, and they'll come down, they can get more bang for their buck as a city. So that makes sense. But what, like you said, one of the really big concerns that we have as a community, especially in Ward One, because it's, it's older, it's more developed. And one of the things that I personally have struggled with in Ward One is you've got certain areas that are considered low income, and only those low-income areas qualify for help from the city to either reface a home or do the roads, whatever it is, whatever beautification and stuff like that. You've, you've got to live in a very specific area for that. Now, the area that I live in is, they call it Section 27, the horse, the horse streets is where I live, right? And so you've got a bunch of senior citizens who live in there along with a bunch of younger families who have recently moved in as that population has either moved out and downsized, or regrettably passed away. The problem is, is when you get a senior living on a fixed income, that only has X amount of money to spend, and then you throw in the healthcare and the increased cost of living with food and everything else, these people who might need help fixing maybe stairs or entrances into their home for disability purpose, or whatever it is, they're not able to receive help from the city because they don't live in a designated area. So I personally would love to see the city get rid of designated areas and address the problems as they sit and as they are. Because I feel like that is a, it's a better use of money, you know? If you've got money sitting and not being used, then why is it, why is it there? I know the city loves to not spend money. But if we've got people we can help and people that we can serve who do qualify for it, even though they live in a good area, I don't see why that should be withheld from them and why that help shouldn't be given. So.
One of our members brought up a question that wanted me to ask. And they were saying that the city of Henderson donated land to the UFC. Do you know anything about that?
I haven't heard anything about the land being donated to the UFC from Henderson.
Turned around.
Oh, you know, you're talking about the Raiders stadium.
Oh, it was the Raiders, the Raiders, okay. It was the Raiders. It was the Raiders. My bad. I got my sports mixed up.
Nope, you're good.
It was the Raiders donated the land to the Raiders and for the Raiders to build something so they could bring in more economic into Henderson.
Right.
And then the Raiders turn around, took that land and sold it for millions and millions of dollars more in pocket of the money.
Let me guess, Robert Madoff?
Were you supposed to say that name out loud?
Anyways.
I don't know. I know who he is, and he'll get mad at me later, but whatever.
Okay, so
So you know anything about that?
I know a thing about that, because that stuff was publicized in the news. And that was actually a big deal and something that myself, as a citizen, I was not happy about. Because again, we've talked about infrastructure and the need to have good roads and easy ways of travel, just to make our city better, more prosperous, and the livability more true. And so when the Raiders purchased that land out in West Henderson to put their practice arena in, right, that was supposed to be great for the city. It was going to bring in X amount of jobs and be this fabulous thing. So we sold it to them, but we sold it for significantly less. And we is, is the city. The city agreed to sell it for significantly less than what that land was valued at, which actually ended up causing issues within the city, because then we had other people who were interested in the land, other businesses that were interested in the land went after the city.
Who would have paid market price?
Who would have paid significantly more?
Like the stadium, $750 million of taxpayers' money.
Oh, you know.
I mean, we're just giving stuff away to these athletes. Why don't we give that same amount, amount of money away to education?
Right, to education, or just anything, health. There's so much that we could have done to increase the amount of paramedics we have on the road.
You see where our priorities lay, right?
I couldn't guess. I would have never guessed. But so, yes, I do know about that. And like I said, so the city sells it for significantly less than what the land was valued at, which then caused problems with other businesses, because those businesses came in and were like, hey, hold on, we told you we would pay X, and you sold it for this much less, which and, and I'm not super versed in business real estate and transactions like that. But I know in home real estate, right, if my husband and I go to purchase a home, they run the value of that home. And if I have bid, let's say I bid $300,000 for this home, and it comes in valued at $350,000, they can't sell it to me for 300 unless it's being foreclosed on or something random like that because of the value of the land. And the part that bothered me was not that other businesses were cheated out, which is a problem. But the big part is myself, as a citizen, we sold that for significantly less, which means the taxes that we raised to pay for necessary and very needed infrastructure with the rate that our city has grown was all lost. So how is that fair to me and to anybody who lives in Henderson? How is it fair for them to be doing that?
How could the city council have blocked that?
So.
How did that, how, how, how did the city allow that to happen in the first place?
So this deal got pushed through extremely quickly. Once all of the players and pieces were in, it got pushed through very, very quickly. And essentially, the city does have, the city council does have the ability to say, oh, hey, you know, we think that this land would be better suited for a sports arena, or, oh, maybe this land would be better suited for a hospital. So we're not going to sell it to a sports arena, or it would be better for housing development, whatever it is. So as, as the council, they are given the discretion to say, okay, we feel this could be best used for this, so we're going to sell it to a company that's going to use it for that. And, and so they were able to do that. Now, previously, previously, under our, our previous city manager, he had put a bill forward, a policy forward with the city council before he left his, his position as the manager, that said all public land that was bid on, right, because the public land was bid on, has to go to the highest bidder. And so when he put that in, that caused, that ruffled a lot of feathers on our city council, because
Isn't that common sense, though?
You would think.
I mean, if I'm selling my car for five grand, and somebody else want to buy it for eight, hello.
You, you would think that that's common sense, and that would be a best practice scenario. However, for whatever, whatever reasons, and again, part of the reason of why I want to run is land in Las Vegas and Henderson, it's running out. It's currently projected, I believe, the quote that I have heard at some development association meetings and a chamber meeting, was the city of Henderson with the land we currently own, so not including land that we intend to annex, has about five years before all of our available land is sold. Las Vegas, they're staying 10 years away, and we're going to have all of the land we can build on.
By that time, Ms. Nilson, Lake Mead will be dried up, and then you have all that area to build some more.
Hey.
I was going to say, you had Steve's wheelhouse now.
Okay, so with that land
You're still talking about land.
With that land, right, we're going to start doing those old-school mud huts like it was originally, and we're going to charge 200 times more than that land is valued at.
Look at Luxor. It's sinking every single year, right?
No. So, so water is a completely separate issue that, as a councilperson, I don't have direct authority over.
Unless you sit on the board.
Unless you sit on the board. And let me tell you something. I would love to see the water authority start talking about how to increase the water that we've got in Lake Mead, instead of us trying to conserve ourselves into prosperity. Because with the projected growth, right? That's what they're trying to do. Conserve, 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 conserve. But nobody's talking about how to make that more manageable, about how to make it truly sustainable. Because if we grow out at the rate we've been growing, and if water continues to be used at the rate it's been going, yes, the Water District Authority says that if everything is perfect, right? If all of the variables are just right and nothing happens, which we all know that's how life works, right?
Yeah, nothing ever happens.
No variables are ever wrong. But if, if that happens, they've got a projected 50 years that we will be able to sustain with Lake Mead. That's great for me. I very well could still be alive in 50 years. My children, I pray that they will still be alive in 50 years. But what about that 51st and 52nd year? Are we going to become a complete deserted land? Because everybody has to move, because businesses can't use water, because everything is so restricted that you can't have a good quality of life? So we need to start working on how to solve the problem and not just slow the problem down. Because, again, I don't feel like in any aspect of life that I have ever seen, can somebody conserve their self into prosperity? So I would like to see us address the problem and start figuring out whether it is heading up north to Oregon, where they have regular floods, and trying to tunnel water down here, or if we go out to Texas and come up with pumps and start pumping water to the lake for areas that flood regularly. I feel like you could make some very large, and I'm sure it would be very expensive. So we would have to get help with it. But I'm sure we could come up with grates and water containers that we could dump and either pump to the valley to help, you know, mitigate the problems of flooding that these areas have, while also bringing water into our valley for sustainability and quality of life.
Is Henderson considered, still considered the safest city in the country?
It depends on who you ask. It depends on who you ask.
How about if I ask a cop?
If you ask a cop. Henderson is still safe, but it's definitely not the safest city. It's not as safe as it was.
It was.
It is absolutely not as safe as it was.
And what could you do about it as councilwoman?
Okay, so I love this question. Like I said, my husband is a retired Henderson police officer. And so the first thing that we've got to do is we've got to help with the morale. I don't know how aware outside persons, outside entities are of the morale with police and fire. But police and fire, back with our previous recession, back in like 2008, they gave up cost of living increases and other benefits that they had earned as first responders to help mitigate the cost that the city was going to incur through loss of taxes and other things. So they had stepped aside and said, hey, look.
Did their unions do that?
The fire, so at this time, it was the fire union specifically that stepped in. And, and they consulted their members and said, hey, look, guys, this is where we're at. We're either going to lose bodies, or we can do this to help out the city. And so they overall came to, to council and said, look, we're going to forego this. If, once we get back to a good place, we just ask that you give it back, right? Treat us fair. We'll, we'll give you one, you give us one when, when you can. And that still hasn't happened. They still haven't been given back what they lost with that. So you've got the morale and the frustrations that the fire department is seeing with that. And then with the city of Henderson specifically, we have gone through four police chiefs in less than the 15 years that I have been married to my husband, or I guess in the 15 years that I have been married to my husband. Since Police Chief Perkins, we have not had sustainable, good
I remember Perkins.
Do you?
Yeah, he was
He grew up in my area. He was in my area.
Didn't he become a state senator or?
I know he's a lobbyist. I know that he is currently a lobbyist, and he is phenomenal.
I know he's not anymore, but I think he went to the legislature one
He, he might have gone to the legislature. I didn't follow him a whole lot with that. But I know that he is currently lobbying to try and help our state.
Maybe this was before your time. What about Mike Mayberry?
So I don't remember Mike Mayberry as well, but he, he was previous to Perkins. And so I was in Henderson at that time. I was just a little bit younger. So I do remember him. I do remember seeing his face on signs and out at meetings and at City Hall. But I don't have a personal relationship with him with that.
So what are your, what are your plans to do something about the crime in Henderson? I mean, as a councilwoman, what, what do you plan to do?
Okay, so for us to address the crime, we've got to give the police the morale, right? Because they have, with the previous two administrators that they've had, their hands have been tied. And it's, this was one of the conversations that I had regularly with my husband, where I opted. When he left, right, he didn't leave because he didn't like police work. He loved police work, and it breaks my heart, and it is infuriating, because he is freaking phenomenal. Because he is freaking phenomenal at what he does. He currently, like I said, he's in Texas. Not a shot that he took, not a shot that he took. But he left because of the politics that got involved at that administrative level. And we we've all seen just the national swing with policing, right? Where police are now seen as villains for doing their jobs. And honestly, there have been some situations where the police have have not treated people humanely. And haven't done things in the way that as a a backseat quarterback, so not somebody who's in the situation. Where you look at it and you're like, ah. But overall, these police officers are doing a great work, they're doing a great work with minimal support. From their own local council leaders, which like you guys were saying, where the rubber meets the road. Part of the reason I'm doing this is because I want to see positive effects. I don't want to have to go and fight with forty eight other legislatures and have one party yelling and the other party yelling and no one listening. To actually understand and solve problems. So with that, we've got to. Create the morale, to increase the morale with our officers, we've got to be able to retain the numbers, right? If we wanna see crime go down, we've got to have enough police officers to respond to the crimes that are happening. There have been multiple times where I've had friends who have called and they call nine one one and they're not for, you know, break. Someone's breaking in or I'm being beaten, they're not what they call priority one calls. But these people get put on hold because our dispatch is answering calls, so we need more dispatchers so that they can.
Train dispatchers.
Trained, we need more trained, good dispatchers who know what they're doing. Who are gonna be able to send police officers to where they need to be. But we also need enough police officers to go and to respond to these situations.
So how you plan to do that? Hire illegal, I mean, hire, hi- what was what North Las Vegas was trying to do?
Hire illegal?
No, 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 it wasn't illegals, it was non citizens. But what what does Henderson wanna do to combat the shortage of police officers?
So um I am a big fan, right? If we wanna get people in and out on the roads quickly of laterals, making sure that we can get qualified people. I say go and scalp the best officers from the best cities that we've got, I mean Henderson is a great place to live. It's why I'm still here, I think that we've got a lot to offer police officers in general, right? Our previous city leadership did not necessarily support or love and and staff leadership. Has not been super supportive of law enforcement officers. And the thing is, is you don't have to like them. I could care less if you like a police officer or not, but by golly, you better respect them and you better acknowledge what they're doing. And give them credit where it's due, because if you can do that, that'll boost the morale, it'll help with retention. Which we need, cause we don't want a whole bunch of brand new police officers coming in that have no experience. Trying to solve problems in these high stress situations, you need that leadership there. So I would like to do that, I would like to start looking for laterals and. The city does need to invest more money, the city of Henderson touts regularly, and I love it because they use almost. Almost sixty percent of the general budget goes to public safety. Fifty seven percent, I think it was fifty seven point zero one percent or point one percent when I was looking at the data most recently. We do need more money for more bodies. That being said.
That would improve the response time.
It would improve the response time, it would improve everything, I mean, if you've got more officers and we've got to improve training as well, right? You had that whole defund the police, which came back and smacked some cities in the face.
That was Jim's idea.
Was that your idea? You're not allowed to have ideas anymore then.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm a huge fan of defunding the police. Now I'm all for demilitarizing the police, but not defunding. I don't think they should be rolling down the street in tanks.
Well.
We don't like martial law. We don't like curfews either.
No, I worked really hard to be eighteen and to not have a curfew, okay?
What, let another year go by? She said she worked really hard.
But so with that, we've got to be able to have the police. However, you cannot take, the city of Henderson, our taxes are low, which is part of the reason why we're such. A highly sought after place, our taxes are low. The crime is relatively low throughout the city, we've got better education than the Las Vegas Valley as a whole. So Henderson is a desirable place to live. With these low taxes, you're not able to create and to generate a large general fund. So my personal opinion about that is, I don't wanna go raising taxes, right? You don't wanna tax a mom and a dad out of, you know, hey, do I put gas in my car to go to work or do I buy food for my family? You don't wanna do that. What I would love to see us do to help increase that is obviously the revitalization of Water Street was huge. That should help bring in taxes. If we can get areas like that where they're producing more income for the city, so we can hire more officers. But I would actually really love to see the city of Henderson go after more grant writers. Because if we can get two or three phenomenal, well versed, experienced grant writers. Who we pay a hundred thousand dollars for their job, if we can get them to each bring in three hundred thousand dollars in grants. They pay for themselves and then we've got the money to to purchase weapons for our police officers. So that wouldn't have to come out of your general general fund. Or to purchase products to help maintain and to update the streets that we so desperately need repaired. Whereas at that point, or our, well, education, my mom's a sixth grade English teacher, so I've got a big old fat opinion on that.
Don't the officers have to go through some type of retraining program every year or no?
So they have to qualify every year and they do take a test when my hus- when my husband was a police officer, so again, he retired about a year and a half ago. Every year they had to take a handful of tests online and it was typically policy tests. And how to treat the general public, what you do if you're placed in a situation like this where maybe it's a. A hazmat type of situation where blood or fecal matter or something's involved. So they have to do that and then they qualify, when my husband was a police officer, I believe they had to qualify twice a year. I think they may only have to qualify once a year now, but I would have to double check with that, with the the patrol guys and see what they do. So they do have to qualify every year. And then the city of Henderson, the way they worked again when my husband was there, was you had your squad. So you had an A squad and a B squad that worked either Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Or some variant where they had an overlapping day. And so every other week, those squads would flip. So squad A would train on week one and squad B would train on train on week two. And they would just alternate to do training specific to the area that they work and serve in.
Boulder Highway, we mentioned that earlier, and that's that's in your ward, right? What what are your plans to clean that up?
So Boulder Highway.
Cause you got prostitution, you got drugs.
What? In Henderson? No, no. We don't have Hell's Angels or any of the gangs on there, you misheard.
Hold on, Hell's Angels, actually, they're 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 um, one of their houses is over by um downtown Las Vegas.
They've got a handful of them.
They got more in Henderson?
They've got some in Henderson, they've got some in Henderson.
I like you guys, by the way.
Is red your favorite color? Probably shouldn't have said that live, but um, so with Boulder Highway with, and that's, I mean.
Have you walked down Boulder Highway, let's say, two in the morning?
No, have not walked down, and I will tell you the honest to goodness truth, I won't walk down Water Street by myself at night either. Because you've got homeless population that straddles both of those and like you said, on Boulder Highway, which by the way, the actual.
That statement right there tells me there's a problem. There's a problem with.
There's a problem with it.
There's a problem either with 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 um city management. Or there's a problem with um um lack of police. Or maybe they don't distribute their police in areas where they should, maybe they were at Lake Las Vegas hanging out at the. What was over there, that four, that that hotel in the Lake Las Vegas?
I've never even been.
You've never been to Har- what's what's that hotel in Lake Las Vegas?
As I say, there's a there's a Westin, there's.
Yeah, they're hanging out there instead of being.
So.
In the bad neighborhoods and cleaning that up.
In my opinion, when I started looking into the city of Henderson and was seriously considering and trying to prep myself to run. For the city of Henderson, do you guys remember that whole thing back in, I wanna say it was two thousand seventeen? Both slogan, being homeless isn't a crime, came about. And legislatively, bills were passed in our state legislation that essentially said, if you do not have a homeless shelter. If you do not have beds to take a homeless person to, you cannot arrest them for the trivial misdemeanor.
Being homeless is not a crime.
Being being homeless is not a crime.
Unfortunate.
Correct.
But then there's some people that choose to be homeless.
Well, and and homeless homelessness in and of it, anyway, okay, so back to your question. With the homeless population in Henderson back in two thousand eight, so this is not too long after I was out of high school. There was a question put on the ballot, asking if the city of Henderson wanted a shelter and they unanimously voted against it, right? Because no one wants to bring homeless people, no one wants to bring drug addictions into their backyard, that's fair, that's understandable. However, when legislation was passed that made it so you have to have a shelter. To be able to either arrest and take to jail or to take these people to a shelter to have a a night's rest. Now we're at a situation where I personally feel we need a homeless shelter. I would like to go beyond just doing a homeless shelter in Henderson. I would like to take either some of this land that they've recently annexed out in my area, out in East Henderson. Or some of the land that they've annexed out in West Henderson, that hasn't been allocated, that hasn't been bought up, that's not built on currently. And I would love to put a homeless center similar to what Las Vegas has, where you've got a shelter, you've got mental health, you've got rehabilitation. You've got job, you've got all of the things, all of the tools that a homeless person would need. To be able to reintegrate into society in the center. And then around it, you could create an area, a green space, something that they could enjoy. That would kinda keep them away from the homes, from the businesses where they tend to. And again, it's not always intentional, sometimes they're just sleeping in front of your shop because it's it's a good spot. However, it deters business and that's that becomes a problem. Cause if you don't have business, then you're not making money and the taxes go down and it's this whole downward spiral for the city.
Is there any, is there any tribal land around Henderson?
Not around Henderson, you get into the tribal land more as you go north up into the Mesquite and Moapa area, there's some tribal lands.
There's none around there at all?
No, nope.
So what 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 boards would you like to sit on if you became a councilwoman?
That's a good question, if I could pick and choose, which I do not feel as as the newbie, I would be able to pick and choose. But I would love to sit on the Water Association Board, because like I said, I would like to see us start addressing ways to increase. The water in Lake Mead instead of just how to not use it. I would also love to sit on the Housing Development Board, because the city of Henderson, for a long time, we were able to grow out. And they had their specific zoning where only these areas can have businesses, only these areas can have residential, only these areas can be industrial. And you kinda chopped the city up and separated it and it makes it so it's not as livable. If you've got a grandma or a grandpa or a young college student who maybe is traveling without a car, they can't live where I live. Because you need a car to get somewhere, because we don't have a lot of bus stops close by, we don't have access to transportation. And Uber, I mean, we're we're on the outskirts, so your Uber rides, a lot of times they don't really wanna take you because it's a long drive for not a lot of money. So I would love to be on the planning so that we could help develop these areas that are left to be developed. In a more cohesive manner where we can provide services and make them accessible to the citizens who live there without having to have. A vehicle. I would also love to sit on the Health District, like I said, my background is in health science and that's something I am passionate about. Something I've been passionate about since I was little when I was diagnosed with diabetes, so I would love to see us start investing, right? We've got a couple of great colleges in Henderson that offer health services. UNLV is technically not in Henderson, but you've got UNLV, you've got Toro, you've got Nevada State, you've got. You've got the CSM, so we've got colleges. I would love to see those programs either grow and I'm talking for all health. Because I feel like mental health is something that is just recently becoming a pool. That should have been being pulled at and buoyed and bolstered up for a long time coming. Especially in in children, right? We've got, we recently had a firefighter in the city of Henderson, Pete Bedian, who committed suicide because of. The constant onslaught of what our first responders see. So I would love to see the full, whole body health, I would love to see mental health addressed and taken care of. I would like to see us start pulling in a school where we've got mental health professionals to help with the areas that we need. I would love to see just general health and wellbeing, I would love to see nutrition, eyes, ears, all of it, dental, all of the things. So I would love to serve on the health as well, just because I feel like as a a type one diabetic, I kind of. Have a little bit of experience beyond my my schooling with that, so and fun fact. Um I was recently diagnosed with cancer and I, it's all good, all taken care of, but prior to.
How old are you?
Thirty six, and hey, you wanna talk about something crazy with the city of Henderson? So the city of Henderson, right, basic was ma- named basic because of the minerals. That they used for, so you know the history, okay? All of the minerals, all of the chemicals, everything that was done in the city of Henderson by Water Street, by Lake Mead, which is the border for my area. And then you've got areas that have recently been developed like Cadence. Cadence has a a rule in their community where they are not allowed to grow anything that produces produce. They are not allowed to put produce yielding plants in their housing district and area. Do you know why they can't do that?
You tell.
They can't do that because that Cadence area was the runoff, was where all of the the chemicals and everything from those plants ran down. So that ground, they apparently do not believe was cleaned up or taken care of well enough. For them to allow homeowners who have purchased their own plot of land, granted, they knew this going in, so can't really fault them. But they're putting kids on that, you have housing units where children are growing up and you're telling me they can't eat their own food? But you don't think that's gonna cause cancer down the road? Like, what's going on?
Well, I remember when I was in fifth grade, just real quick, I remember when I was in fifth grade. And it was right down the street here in Torrey Pines in Charleston. I was at Rose Warren Elementary School, we're in fifth grade and all of a sudden, we're playing kickball. And all of a sudden, the ground starts shaking like we're having an earthquake, we're like, what the heck? So all the teachers rush us into the classrooms and this is right when they first started putting TVs in the classroom. So they turn the TV on, it's on the news, that's when Pepcom blew up.
Oh, yeah, see, so I was young when Pepcom blew up, I was.
Blew windows out, oh, that was a mess.
So my parents, my father actually had a house on Lake Mead. And my my parents had, so my house, my dad owned a home that his brother was living in on Lake Mead. And then my parents had bought a house not too far behind that, maybe, I don't know, half mile, three quarters of a mile behind that. And they were, their houses, we, my mom had several neighbors where their houses got caved in, like you said, you had garage doors that folded in. You had windows that broke, all of that stuff when Pepcom exploded. And so we've got history of chemical exposure, land exposure in Henderson. So I was diagnosed, it was an appendix cancer, but I was very fortunate, got in, doctors took care of that extremely early. Extremely well, but I mean, it's it's a fight and it's frustrating for me. As somebody who has gone through that, and I'm sure it would be frustrating for a lot of people. They did not have, the city, the Clark County did not have, the state of Nevada did not have. A hospital that had the qualifications to do the treatment that I needed to get rid of my cancer, so I went out. Yeah, I'm good now, I went out to Mayo and the Mayo doctors were phenomenal, they handled everything really well. But I would love to see Henderson put in a research oriented facility like Mayo, like Huntsman. Like UCLA, so that we have these ability, the ability to do this. Because as a person, I had to, my husband and I left and we had to leave my children, thank goodness, I have family in town that could take care of them while we were gone. But if you're single or if you don't have family around, what are you gonna do? That's hard and it's frustrating, so I would love to serve on a board like that.
Well, we're running out of time.
Okay.
And we have another show, but if we didn't have another show and we didn't have that interview, endorsement interview on Saturday. Then I probably would have just said, let's just keep going.
Yeah.
But but it's been very great talking with you, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you.
And with that said, Mark's gonna zoom in on you and you could say the final word or direct people to your website. Or tell people why they need to vote for you, or tell people come on down to the endorsement interview and watch you in action again.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So I would love for you guys to come on down to the endorsement interview. I feel like if I'm given the opportunity to connect with you in person, it's much easier for you to understand and to see and to feel the excitement and the love that I have for the city of Henderson. My website, if you would like to learn more about me, is alinelson.com. I'm gonna spell it for you because it's kinda tricky. Ally is A-L-I, Nelson is N-I-L-S-O-N dot com. You can also reach me directly if you've got questions at seven zero two, three, five, three, eight, zero, two, eight. And to answer your question, I am positive that I am the best candidate for the city of Henderson. As a mother, I will fight for you like a mother. I will advocate for you like a mother. I will listen to you like a mother and I will make sure that you are heard like a mother would.
Your name is Alicia or Ally?
My legal full first name is Alicia. I have gone by Ally.
Did I get it wrong?
I have gone by Ally since I was knee-high to a grasshopper, so.
Which one do you like better?
Ally.
Okay. Is that, is that how it's gonna be on your, on the ballot?
So on the ballot, you have to have your legal name. So it'll be Alicia and then parentheses, Ally Brady, because Brady's my maiden name. And again, I grew up in Ward One, so I've got a lot of friends who know me as Brady. But it'll be Alicia, parentheses, Ally Brady Nelson.
Not the Brady Bunch?
Not the Brady Bunch. Not the Brady Bunch. We're cooler than that.
Well, Ms. Well, Ms. Nelson, thank you so much for coming on. We really appreciate it. Looking forward to seeing you on Saturday as well, although I won't be asking any questions because I don't vote. And, uh, and, uh, but I'll be observing and watching at afar, but I'm, I'll, I'll be around in the structure to make sure. So Jim, thank you for coming on and, and doing this with me like always. Thanks, Jim. Folks, that's, uh, Alicia Ally Nelson, um, candidate for Henderson City Council, Ward number one for the special election. Make sure everybody comes down, come down to, um, um, Juan's Flamin Fajitas on sixteen South, uh, Water Street.
Uh, Water Street.
Um, between the hours of eleven and one and, and watch these candidates in action. Um, because, uh, we're gonna really ask them some tough questions. Let's see if they can handle it. I always say, if they run and they're not there, that means they're scared. This is Steve Sanchez, Jim Jones of Veterans and Politics. Until next time.